Hey, everyone. Call the special city council meeting order Monday, November twenty eighth, four P M. Kirby Moana.
Tom Marslake.
San Solaris.
David Paradise.
Michael Summerfield.
Twenty twenty-three final budget and levy discussion.
Mayor and council, in your packet, I have the equivalent of the preliminary budget that we had looked at over a month ago. And then in addition to that, we've added in the budgets for the enterprise accounts. So water and sewer and wastewater and storm water. Meeting with staff and going over those. It was similar. There's a similar tension that the mayor and council members that were in attendance went before. Certain things like fuel had gone up. We looked at what the what had exceeded budgets this time around with maintenance. And I know Danny's put a lot of focus on doing some repairs and maintenance that, in his opinion, hadn't been done for a while under his predecessor. So I think they were a little heavy in maintenance this year, which went a little over budget to make up for some years where those budgets just went right back in the coffers. But there were some increases on those. So in addition to those budget worksheets, we'll also find our tax capacity and comparisons of last year's budget at this point and our proposed budget next year. This still includes the increases in what council had stated at our preliminary workshop. So the levy information has not changed. Unless you'd like me to, again, make any changes in that budget. From the enterprise accounts, we did take a look at what the shortfalls may be from additional staff that have been hired this year in public works. And again, some additional costs through fuel or expanding budgets for maintenance and the water budget, if we kept current rates of water, would have a shortfall of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and change. And the storm sewer would have a shortfall. Now, most of those could be explained just by the debt service that we're looking at for their portion of the downtown improvement project for this year. For instance, storm water, I believe when Jessica and I talked to Wendy last year, looking forward to that twenty twenty-two budget where we're only going to have some interest to pay on the downtown improvement project bond. She had said that storm sewer is not going to be able to cover at the current rates to cover their portion of that debt service. So they're looking at a forty-eight thousand six hundred dollar shortfall. If, again, that's if rates stay the same. Sanitary sewer and wastewater are totally fine in those accounts because they've actually had debt service that has fallen off. So wastewater has no current debt service. So money is going into there, building up into that same wastewater expansion fund. So then when we do talk about a wastewater plant, we won't be starting at zero. We have some money nestled away. And then we'll talk about whether rate study or just crunching the numbers, what that's going to look like for increases that will be necessary depending on what kind of plant we're going to have, whether we're going to mix with Waverly, all that. Okay, just to keep up water, lots of information. So we did look at some proposed water and sewer rates that would take care of that shortfall in those two accounts. If we, so currently, our base rate for water is five dollars, ten cents per month. And then the tiers start at five seventy-five. If the base rate went up to six dollars, it would be a ninety ninety cent increase. And the tiers went up by twenty-five cents. It would be probably twenty-five cents for tier one. And then it's a percentage calculation that the following tiers are based off of tier one. But if those base rates for the base and the tier one went to six dollars each, we would we would cover that shortfall and some extra, you know, just we're playing around with five cents, ten cents here and there. Just that would that would cover water. That's mostly in there. Debt service that that's covering. And then for storm sewer, again, the whole storm sewer budget at current rates would be for revenues would be ninety thousand four eighty, so with an increase. And that's at a five dollar storm sewer rate. So to cover a hundred thirty-nine thousand dollar expenditure, we would be looking at raising that storm sewer from five dollars to seven seventy-five, so two seventy-five. But that's a once a month. There's no tiers involved in storm sewer. And that would bring that above the threshold necessary to pay down the debt service for storm sewer. And I made some copy of it just to crunch numbers, but if you wanted to see them, I could pass that around or I could make copies of that and put that with. So I know from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, I think rates, it wasn't across the board. Some things went up and some things stayed the same. I think most things went up, like tiers went up by, I think, thirty-five or forty cents, depending on which tier. And the base rate also went up. And I think wastewater did not, but storm or sanitary sewer rate gone up also. So ninety cents is a bigger piece, but that's also not compounded by thousands of gallons. That's just a flat. As far as just the tiers, twenty-five cents is less than what things went up last year.
What what kind of a difference would that make on an average bill? Did you have that?
I didn't have that information. I was just spit on. I just went by how many thousands of gallons that we pumped last year. So then the estimate this year is ninety-one million gallons, so ninety-one thousand units. And again, if it would help rather than writing down what I'm saying, it would just pass out.
Yeah.
We can copy that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Even before we're out here. So and we'll just include that when we post the and then, so that would include, so we'd be talking about approving rates if we do increase rates at the December meeting, pitching rates then if that was. But the numbers you'll see in the worksheet, as far as revenues, those are based on those potential increases. So the other option would be if we were looking at assessments in the next year for the downtown improvement project. So some some or all of these increases could be wiped out by what we're paying debt service for the downtown improvement. So or not wiped out, but they could be explained by those. Other things have gone up. All things equal, so have revenues, but that that piece of pie, we're not yet looking at assessments. So if that was the other way.
Yeah, I know a while back we did a we did a check on water rates in surrounding communities and stuff. And I think we were pretty low on that scale, if I remember correctly. I know Howard Lake is a lot higher than me or
Howard Lake and Buffalo.
And Buffalo.
Yeah.
Buffalo is just going to increase theirs.
Pretty much, we're basically even with Delano and Watertown. And then Howard Lake and Buffalo are higher. And then in Waverly's, you really can't compare because they theirs are a lot higher, but they build in all of their street improvements into what they build for their water. So theirs look a lot higher than ours, but they use the extra money for all the street improvements. So.
Well, I think we also take a look to when we're talking about increases, if we're going to do or not, it's obviously the wastewater, but also what the potential of getting a water treatment facility too. That'll have to come from that as well. So once we have a, once we get a number on water treatment, we're in a plan for if we're sharing and all the other factors that will go into water treatment, I know we'll be talking about rate increases. It'll have to. That'll be a large undertaking.
If we weren't to make in if we didn't do rate increases this year, what what would that look like for where would that downfall get covered from? Just the general budget then?
No, the enterprise, the enterprise funds have to stand on their own. So water has to pay for water. It can't borrow from sewer. And it can't borrow from the levy. So technically, yes, it could borrow from levy, but it would borrow at, it could take a loan from the general fund. I think that's been done last year. I don't know how far back. But that we're going to likely have more more income in water than again in twenty twenty-four, even at the same rates. There's going to be some building. But we can't, the tiers, you can't really, it's an estimate. You can't promise that there's going to be that much water usage. I mean, if we see an economic downturn, I don't want it as it is, but I could foresee people that there's going to be some margin of people that water now in good times and won't water in bad times. And that's, I mean, it's a part of our water use. People aren't going to stop drinking water. But it is effective. It is elastic with the market. So
So without
That revenue would have to be generated.
Yeah, so without borrowing from the levy, we would have to increase rates pretty much no matter what.
Right. And whatever borrow would have to be paid back somehow. So there I would think you want a plan for if you're robbing from the future, how you're going to you'd have a future plan. And if we're already planning on water rate increases as being like the likely method to pay for that water plant. It's going to have to happen in the future as well. So if you're going to put it on.
No, if you don't raise rates, you're just kicking a can down the road anyway.
And I mean, the base rate, a ninety cent base rate, that's going to be under twelve dollars for the year. I mean, eleven dollars or so of the year per per household. And the tiers twenty-five cents is not as much as last year.
Right. I'm just thinking, I mean, is there a way if you increase the base rate more to level off what the tiers would be?
I did. I ran and I used this little Excel spreadsheet as a calculator. And I ran, if only we changed the tiers, how much would it have to change? If only we changed the base rate, how much? And it had to go to, I think it was like nine dollars or ten dollars. It almost had to double. Because it's only one instance per household versus the thousands. I think the whole thing, if you went only water rates for the tiers, I think it had to go to like six fifteen or six twenty. I have run the numbers. I mean, just plug in different numbers now, but it's less numbers go into the tiers because they're compounded so many times. But the base rate to pay just out of base rates, you really have to double. The storm water would be the heftier, you know, there isn't a tier to increase. And it's looking at about like a sixty percent increase in their budget because I think just the debt service in there, it's not just for the downtown improvement project. There was another piece of debt earlier, but the storm sewer debt service is like around that fifty grand, fifty-three thousand, something like that. So and their shortfall is forty-eight thousand and change. So you know, that's that's their only, the only way for storm sewer to pay for itself is through that that rate, that base rate. But again, that's looking at a two a little bit more than a fifty percent increase. But it's once a month, two twenty-five more once a month per household.
Right. That's that's why I'd ask about the base rate. I just.
But yes, I did try to I did try out those scenarios and it would be a a large shift in base rate to try to make up for the twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand. But then we're looking at no sanitary sewer increases. Those would hold at four fifty and five thirty per unit. And wastewater would hold steady as well. Those, you know, wastewater and sanitary sewer likely would be going up once we're talking about a wastewater plant.
Yeah, I mean, is there a possibility of looking at the just the small increase for that to set aside for the wastewater treatment plant?
There is.
Even on just even if it was just the base rate.
We can increase the wastewater. My thought and that, I know the discussions last year with Wendy here with all of her experience, she had recommended, you know, it's in the long run, it's going to be a less sticker shock to raise rates slowly. You know, and it makes sense that things are going up. It makes sense that everything would be looking at. And we do have overlays of expenditures that we're going to have in wastewater. My thought with this mostly being that storm sewer is a steep increase and that we're looking for, you know, water base rate and tier one, I think that in we know that those if if we're talking about water and wastewater plant, pretty much all these rates are going to be going up when those when those hit. It would lessen that blow a little bit then, but I think in my thought with not raising two of these was two of them are going to see some larger increases. So just to offset the pocketbook this year when we're looking at in I don't know how many years, two to five years for a wastewater plant. So we can do maybe match whatever increase we had last year for wastewater, just to we are, we, if if all we're looking at for wastewater is what is budgeted in the worksheet and revenues are at our estimate, there is a, you know, there is a cash flow coming in for wastewater. There is going to be, because we dropped our our payment for debt service in wastewater had been something like three hundred eighty thousand dollars, something like that. That's including money coming in from Waverly and twelve high, but that the wastewater plant has paid off this year. So that's done with one, on the next. But with that behind us, there is what what's coming in in wastewater this year is more than bank records.
Could we see at the December meeting like one from like a bill from one from each category? Tier one, two, and three with the increases? And then if we did do an increase in the rates, just the base rate, what that would look like?
So an estimated bill, maybe averages, I don't know what I don't have time to, Kristi.
Yeah, I mean, she could pick out an average number for tier one, two, and three and just see what that would look like with the added twenty-five cents per tier. And then what it would look like if we just did a base rate increase?
It might be a good idea to have that information prior to council meeting. So, you know, you're not the public is always going to go to the lowest rate, lowest number they can possibly get to. And I understand that. However, they're not going to understand why, you know, we need to adjust these to put ourselves in a position where we're preparing for a wastewater treatment plant and a water treatment plant. You know, so do we do we necessarily want to share all that information? It's not that we're going to hide anything. I mean, we can make it available, but I think having those numbers prior to the meeting for us to review and get a thorough understanding of what we're looking at.
Two weeks till the council meeting and then and that's when we would be pitching the potential rate increases anyways. But rather than just getting those numbers in five days before the meeting, Kristi and I can look at bills tomorrow and just see what I'm sure we modeled something similar last year when we were looking at reading.
Yeah.
So we kind of repeat that work.
Yep.
And then again, with my, and then that would be a good opportunity for you guys to see this because we're going to be talking about different numbers in these columns. So I'll build it out with just water base rate increases. What this looks like. And then separately, what a bill would look like. Or maybe just what a year's worth of bills would look like for find out what an average usage is. But you know, you want to see what high use is also, right? Because you want to see tier two or tier three, what they're going to be looking at. But we can crunch those numbers this week and
I can't imagine there's too many tier threes outside of in the summertime.
Probably not a lot, but but that'll also be, because yeah, once those hit those tiers, it's going to be a little more than twenty-five cents. I think that if in the in the code, it's about what percentage tier two is of tier one, you know, it's this much more this. So with twenty-five percent increase and then with just base rate increase. Right, adjusting those numbers actually wouldn't be that hard. Like right here, I don't have you guys captive for an hour and a half, but just getting a couple of numbers together, probably if we recessed rather than take that much. I know running the spreadsheet wouldn't because it's just it's our ability to use some different figures and come up with different.
Yeah, I mean, if we just see it even probably by early next week, I think it'd be fine to be able to ask questions and get it kind of a hard look at all of that. So overall, the the tax rate though is going down.
The budget is going up considerably, but the tax rate is going down. And none of that has changed from our discussion in the preliminary. I mean, that is, that's undertaking quite a bit, bringing on the entirety of the fire department budget. And again, no, no better time for that to have happened for the county to be sticking to their guns about assessments than this this year is when that tax capacity shift is hitting from all the building that went on about two years ago. So that's a little easier to sum.
Yeah, I know that they sent out all of their estimates for the tax increases recently. And and they made it look like you're going to have just huge increases within the city. And it just, looking at it, it was like, ah, that's not right. I mean, home value could go up and that could cause you to have an increased rate, but.
I would not be surprised if everyone
Which most of them did.
Yeah.
Everyone's home values are going up drastically.
Yeah. And if you want to contest it, they won't do anything about it until your twenty twenty-four taxes. So and they're not scheduling any of those reviews out until like April or May from when I talked to the county assessor about it. So.
Yeah. The the way I'm presenting this data is I'm mirroring what Wendy had. And it all makes sense, but I guess I don't know how we would account for we account for some variation in home value, but of course, this is likely whoever's in one of these brackets wasn't in that bracket. But how it's going now, they weren't in that bracket last year. So it's not, yes, if your if your home stayed the same value, your taxes would be going down as far as what portion is going to the city this year. But I'm sure no one's is.
No, we, I mean, ours saw a sixty thousand dollar increase. And we basically did nothing to the house. So that bumped us up into a different category. So.
That being said, you know, this is the, what we said at the preliminary is the top end of what, you know, at this point we can ask for. So it's not the bottom end. So if there is any, still any interest from council that's saying adjusted anything on that levy down.
The only thing that I
By line and see where those savings would come from.
Yeah, the only thing that I really saw that we could even really look at at decreasing was if we don't put that money aside for the regional park, since the fire department is looking at taking that over for a little while until we get more of our information regarding what the soil samples are going to say out there for what can you go out there. So that was the only thing that I really looked at that that could be decreased without running into potential budget issues. But I know we talked about that before and we decided against changing that.
Well, when you consider lion's share levy increase was how we handled the fire department.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, and that is something that
Six thousand dollars, I think, yeah.
That is something that should be emphasized at our, you know, especially if it's going to be our truth and taxation meeting as well coming up. But emphasizing that yes, again, it's a rate decrease as far as the city is concerned. There's probably no one in town that's paying less in taxes even to the city than last year. But the rate is lower. But emphasizing again, the fire department and that with that fire department going on there, that's every single household has a hundred fifty dollars that isn't going to special assessments on the taxes as well. So it's it's not going to just be every single person, you know, is now paying one fifty more on their taxes and one fifty less on the special assessment. It's now going to be appropriated by home value. So there's going to be some paying a little bit more for fire service, a little bit not, but that's how the county is
requiring.
Requiring to be done, or it's a steep fee from now going forward to have them per special assessment. So if we did, it would be I don't remember the calculation I have, but it is a steep fee per assessment. Again, I think that's what we went on the preliminary, but just a reminder to myself and to remember that if there is pushback against what we're looking at, the budget is, if one silver lining is that there is going to be that. There's no special assessment for fire service.
Hey, I just tried to renegotiate my Comcast bill. This is nothing.
They didn't think. Okay, so homework for me will be running some what average bills may look like with tiers, maybe a high user, average user with twenty-five cent increases and the base rate or just base rate increases. As far as storm sewer, I mean, there's there's no tiers involved there.
Yeah, that was just, that that one it is.
That's what's going to cover it. So if, so when we put together those bills, do you just want to know what water would look like or you want to know what a bill would look like? Because that, you know.
A bill.
Okay. So we'll try to crunch crunch some numbers with that additional two seventy-five in on that. And then just feeling the room, you were talking about also potential wastewater increase that keep, do you want to pursue that as well?
What's the base rate right now?
The base rate for wastewater is six oh five and the per unit range is five oh five.
I think if we I think there's going to be enough increases on the water bill to just have to leave that for right now.
A little bit of reprieve when these are going up and and again, even with the rate rate lowering, there's going to be there's going to be people that are concerned about the taxes going up already. So some increases and some holding steady or some things going to cut. Would be better.
Well, let's hope the wastewater client isn't five years out.
There'll be some slow growth for
There's going to be, the developers are going to say V D Os go somewhere else.
Yeah, because I don't know what the what their timetable for wastewater would be from planning to up and running.
Well, if the downtown improvement project is any indicator, we went, I don't know, things things got a little slower there. It was, you know, wind stream, not moving things and, you know, a lot of complications involved, but.
Yeah.
No cement.
Huh?
No cement.
No cement, yeah.
Yes, any any one of the factors could have been stopped, but
Yeah.
Once it was each piling onto each other all the way to snowfall.
Right.
Exactly.
Thank you. So yes, anyway, we're not using our voting on anything today, but
Right.
I have water bill homework and that's what we're looking at.
Just take a
Which is more of a water rates discussion. So I think that was likely to be on the on the December agenda anyway, but I will get you information about what different rates would look like early enough that you can actually have an idea of which way any one of you would want to go.
Some go chew on for a couple of days, you know.
In December.
Is, would there be any kind of decrease or what, just off the top of your head, if we took and lowered the regional park down to a hundred thousand instead of a hundred fifty? What? Any idea what that would bring our tax rate to?
I mean, I guess it would be fifty thousand off, one point nine. I mean, it's going to affect that.
Number right there.
I just, I just want to know if it would it would create any savings really for, you know, anyone in town. It would still be a hundred thousand. It would still be a hundred thousand put away for it.
So just taking off fifty thousand, right?
And I'm just throwing the idea out there. Thinking outside the box now, I guess.
So it would be a one and a half to two percent less of a nominal increase in the budget. So, you know, with that, right now, the entirety of the budget is going up by let's say four hundred thousand dollars with the, everything included. Um, and it would go up by three fifty instead. It'd be a couple of percentage less. So I, I don't know what the numbers different. I think you're probably looking at maybe ten, ten dollars less in the actual taxes paid for the year. But that's just doing like a couple of quick calculations, not really breaking it down.
Create it under your homework then?
By tier. If you'd like, I mean, I can just do the total. Not a lot has to change, just to run the totals.
Yeah, I just, I won't look at any way to try to save anybody just a little bit of money, cause it's, with all the other stuff going on in the world, I mean, we don't know what gas prices are even gonna look like in, in two months. We could be back up to five bucks a gallon and.
It's probably gonna be down to two dollars a gallon, but go ahead. All right, so rub the numbers with fifty thousand less to the regional park development.
Part, just part development, yeah.
I think that knocks about three point two percent off the levy, something like that.
And just a little bit of offset for the other increases, but.
All the, all the things included in here will stay the same, but I'll make a mirror for, you know, another copy of, you know, the levy comparison and the most levy certification, just with what the percentages ever were looking, and then spitting out at the end what the differences, the potential differences seen, um, just so it's apples to apples, what that fifty thousand change would be per household.
Right.
Attention.
Any other questions for Michael on the budget?
Nope.
I just wanna say thanks for all the work you're putting into all of this. So I know it wasn't easy to start off with, and it took a lot of front end hours to learn how the process was done prior to you being here, so.
Each step is making more and more sense as the heat comes full circle.
Fantastic job, guys.
Thank you.
Yep. Holy sugar.
No other questions? Nothing. Okay, um, I'll make motion adjourned.
Second.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes four zero. We're adjourned.